You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the March 1st, 2023 meeting of the La Porte County Commission. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Very good. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the March 1st, 2023 La Porte County Commissioners Meeting to order. We're going to start to... Good morning. So calling the La Porte County Commissioners Meeting for Wednesday, March 1st, 2023 to order. We're going to start today with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Sullivan, would you lead us this morning, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Haney.
Present.
Commissioner Graham Rosa.
Present.
Commissioner Merzinski.
Here.
All three are present.
Good morning, Commissioner Merzinski. Thank you for your email with some of that documentation here this morning. We appreciate you providing something for your medical exemption this morning. Next, we'll consider the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions?
Okay, so we're gonna have to delete the appointment to the Library Board. And I believe that's the only one.
All right, very good. We have a motion to remove item I from the agenda here today. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second? All right. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, very good. Is there any other additions or corrections to the agenda for today?
Motion to approve the agenda as corrected, amended.
Second.
All right, motion is second. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration of your approval of our February 15th, 2023 minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, and we're gonna do a roll call votes here since we have a member participating via Zoom. Mr. Auditor.
Commissioner Merzinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Graham Rosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. Next, consideration of claims, please, Mr. Auditor.
Commissioners payroll for the period ending 2/17/2023 is in the amount of $1,426,496.96. And operating expense claims for the period are $880,353.73.
Thank you.
That's a good move.
I have a motion to approve the claims as presented.
Motion to approve?
All right, and a second. Very good discussion. All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Merzinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Graham Rosa.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. Next, we have public comment. Is any members of the public who would like to speak?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Steve Hollifield, 678-2E, 100 South. As I spoke at the council meeting last week, we had a board meeting last night. Mr. Haney, thank you for attending of the Lincoln Township Board and the trustee with the public. And we also had a Zoom meeting with Kevin, I didn't think of his last name, from Indiana Township Association. We still have issues out there. We're still trying to work through them, but I want to keep you updated. And one other thing, I spoke with Ms. Graham Rosa this weekend, and I talked with Mr. Novak in the council on Monday with Mr. Pressel, Doug Miller. I was down at the State House last month, speaking for 1355. I spoke with Doug Miller, Representative Miller, he's the one sponsored it. I spoke with Mr. Pressel, State Board of Accounts, DLGF. I offered up a suggestion that maybe if we all worked together up here to start something on this, that we could keep the state, you know, at bay for such a while. These are not going away. These township resolutions and bills, they're not going away. They all suggested and agreed that if we take this upon ourselves, it will help in the future. I offered up my services to chair a meeting between the fire chiefs, the township trustees, the township boards. I'm asking you guys if you would be interested in going to these. Mr. Pressel suggested one thing, please make it after session because he's very busy right now, and that's no problem for me. I'm asking for you guys some assistance in getting the word out, possibly some, creating some agenda and a place to have it. So that's what I'm there for. One other quick thing. The election was a resolution by the people to get rid of Shaw Friedman on the Bickeryan fighting. We're still seeing some of that. My biggest fear is if we don't straighten that mess up, he's gonna be back in power in two years, and we're gonna have an even harder time getting rid of him next time. So if we could be a little more civil, I would just, things I'm noticing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollifield. One brief update for you. At the meeting last night, I told the board I would follow up on the radios that the county done. It appears right now, I'm not hammering down on those numbers, but it appears there were 10 that were given to the department that were, would be portables, six mobiles and one base station. So I'll be reaching out to the trustee, to Nancy, to follow up with her, try and get some serial numbers and figure out where the rest of those are. So if you want to update the board about that, you know, please feel free to go ahead. We're diving right into that.
All right, well, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Tommy Klawick, 1316 Ohio Street, Michigan City. I'm also the Michigan City Member of the Michigan City Fire and Emergency Commission, and I have a public service announcement I'd like to make. This is for your attention, upwardly mobile teenagers, young adults, college students aged 16 and up. Want to be a lifeguard this summer? We're now accepting applications. Michigan City, Washington Park, lifeguards needed. Sorry. Lifeguard, 2550 an hour. Assistant head lifeguard, 2650 an hour. Head lifeguard, 2754 an hour. Requirements: Must obtain a lifeguard certification. Must be just at least 16 years of age. Must have a valid driver's license. Will have a free waterfront lifeguard training course. Dates to be determined. Submit applications to the Michigan City Fire Department Administration Building at 2510 East Michigan Boulevard. It's just two doors down from McDonald's there on the boulevard, or at City Hall at 100 East Michigan Boulevard. Need more information? Send us a message or contact us at area code 219-873-1440, extension 440, or contact our Public Information Officer, Ms. Tia Free at tfree@emichigancity.com. And smoking carbon dioxide detectors save lives.
Thank you, Ms... Thank you.
Mark Parkman, 4052 South 1100 West, Westville.
And Ron Shafer, 1566 East Glacier, Ben Laporte.
Morning.
Good morning. So there was a meeting last night for Pioneer Land, and the discussion came up about the bathrooms at the north end of the fairgrounds by the grandstands. So we would like to bring that up again. I know it's been talked about in the past, trying to get it to move ahead a little quicker. We've talked to the county attorney. After talking to people individually on the board and on the council, we spoke to the county engineer, and he said that he's about a week out with the drawings to be able to go downstate. And so we just kind of wanted to be up here to ask if that process could be expedited. I don't know if we can get them in before the fair or not, but hoping that we can definitely get them done this year.
But we'd be asking to have it done before the fair, if possible.
So I actually attended that meeting, and I do apologize to the Lincoln Township. I couldn't attend two meetings at the same time, but I did go to Pioneer Land. And this has been an issue, and I believe that it's a safety issue. You know, I do know that we, they do rent porta-potties, and the building was taken down over three years ago, and we still haven't gotten that building put back up. I believe with the ARP money that we have, that perhaps we should send it down to the council and see if some of the ARP money can be used to facilitate it. Now, because we are on such a short period of time, and I do not want to rush this through as an emergency, I do believe that there is time to go ahead and solicit some bids. We have the plans somewhat ready, and if we could quickly get this out and have it solicit bids so that we can give the opportunity to a lot of different companies to go ahead and bid on it, perhaps we can make this deadline. So, you know, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion of support to have them go down to the council and figure out financially how we could, you know, we can fund this project. And then perhaps we, as a commission, we would support it and get the contracts and get the bids out.
If that's your motion, I would second that. That's one of the biggest complaints we have at the fair is about the bathrooms always. So I would second your motion.
Very good. I appreciate that. And we have Mr. Sullivan in the back. You don't have to get up. Just kind of a thumbs up or thumbs down. Are those plans you are working on kind of ready to?
This Thursday, we're gonna have a review of the city talent and the park board, their job force, to make sure that everything's compatible with what they want. And specifications will be, I'll have to put those together. I can have the foundation release ready Thursday so we can send that down to the state group so we can at least get some of the excavation and the foundation in. After that, the building convention will be keeping up. It's gonna be pushing a little bit to get it done and completed by July, you know, first of July deadline, but I think it's still open.
All right, thank you. Thank you just for those on Zoom. That was our county engineer, Jay Sullivan. He's been working on some plans for that bathroom, and he was just giving us a brief update on it. It's gonna be close to getting it done in time, but it looks like they're well on their way there. So if there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on... Oh, I'm sorry.
I would just like to say one thing, and this is a problem no matter where you go. There's always a longer line in the ladies' room, so if we could get a couple extra stalls for the female side of it, it would be greatly appreciated.
We talked about that this morning.
The department just brought that up, so I'm gonna modify the lady's side of the restroom. He's had a three stall in that part.
So for the record, the engineer has said that he's aware of that and that they're gonna try to figure out how they can modify that, so.
All right, excellent. Hearing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Graham Rosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Merzinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you very much. So you're asking us to go to the council then next? Is that would be the next step for us?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate the support.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead.
Right. Anyone else for public comment?
Good morning.
Good morning. Rick Kentaff, 324 Box Street, La Porte, Indiana. Two weeks ago, I appeared here and requested some answers from Commissioner President Haney as to why in the world he thinks it's a good idea to knock the county economic development efforts previously and thinks that that will attract new business or create jobs. And I got nothing in response to him or from this board. Instead, he thinks, instead he goes to the redevelopment commission and complains the copy of the article that went statewide is the same one that Shaw Friedman had, and he thinks that that's some type of a big deal. I had asked Mr. Friedman for a copy of the article that quoted Mr. Haney as saying this county has languished and that projects were delayed, and he wasn't tolerating stagnation and poor performance. Even though three people he fired, Tony Rodriguez, Bailey McGrath, and Mike Seitz, did a great job, and the 2022 report proved that. No, he was more worried that I had been working with Mr. Friedman. Well, guess what, Mr. Haney? My family has been with, working with Mr. Friedman for the betterment of this county for over 22 years. Back in 2001, when my late father, A.J. Kentaff, was the lead plaintiff in a lawsuit brought by the county government to go after Nippsco for rates and services. Now, I know you weren't, you're new to La Porte County, but probably down in Florida at that time, so you wouldn't appreciate what my family has done to accomplish that suit. Let's talk about economic development. That lawsuit that my dad, along with 13 other Laportians, led to a 5.5 rate credit on Nippsco bills that lasted for 10 years, bringing millions of dollars of relief to hard-pressed residents and businesses in La Porte County. You see, we got things done, unlike what I've seen from you in the last two years on this commission. I never see you accomplishing anything, Mr. Haney, but criticizing, attacking others. Let's try, why don't you try to match this? Mr. Friedman landed a $1 million grant to finish off the rail connectivity in Kingsbury Industrial Park. Why don't you prove what you have done? Same with the 3.5 million that he landed in the last Nippsco rate case and incentive so the county can upgrade the electrical infrastructure in the rail park and use that money to attract new business. I say again, Mr. Haney, what have you done? When another big economic development went, I watched the council meeting last July where Councilman Terry Garner said without Mr. Friedman, he couldn't have saved the county fair that was struggling under debt without Mr. Friedman's help, creating the Fairground Event Management Corporation. Again, what have you done, Mr. Haney, except make false allegations and unfounded claims? I suggest less criticism in tearing down others who went before you. You need to build, you need to build and be positive for change and apologize to the county for the comments that you tore down, tore this county down that went statewide. I also want to say something else. I read the email exchange between you and Mr. Friedman where you wanted to suggest that I was a surrogate and a mouthpiece for Mr. Friedman. Well, let me assure you of something, Mr. Haney. I'm nobody's surrogate and I'm nobody's mouthpiece. Anyone that knows me knows I speak for myself. I don't speak for anybody else. When I stand before this board or any other board, I'm my own man. I have been for many years. I'll be 61 next week. Matter of fact, on the 7th of March, I'll be 61. My father, my father was a man that stood up for the things in this community, and he fought hard for the betterment of things in the city of La Porte and the county. He instilled that in me. That's why I stand before you today. I don't stand before you for anybody else but myself and the taxpayers of this county. So I suggest, if you have something to say about me, I would recommend you say it to me. Don't put it on social media, or don't put it in emails to other people. If you have something to say about Rick Kentaff, say it to me, sir. I'll be glad to address anything you want to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else for public comment? Is there anyone on Zoom? All right, seeing no one, no hands raised on Zoom, no one else here. Public comment is now closed. We're going to move on to department head comments. Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sean Fitzpatrick, Director of Facilities. Trying to give a quick update on some things going around. So we've been continuing our effort to keep up with the work orders and make sure that things that are being identified and broken are being repaired in the timely manner. So we're currently over 500 for the month of February, and we're still, we probably could do 600 or 700 if we had additional staff, which we're working on building that with the part-timers as we're not able to get any full-time help at this point. Currently, we're painting the first floor of the courthouse, and we're in the planning stages of major aesthetic improvements inside the higher building with the goal of making that the standard for the rest of the facilities going forward. So the signage has been installed at Michigan City Courthouse, and two weeks ago, we performed a control power down to make sure all the life safety measures were in place and everything operated as expected in the event of a power outage. And with the exception of a few minor glitchy things, everything was pretty much handled well, and we're okay with the progress, and we have a plan in place to deal with the issues that we did discover. Our Roland Prairie project is pretty close to completion. We have a few things that are outstanding and waiting to be installed, waiting on parts and some other equipment to arrive, and then we should be able to get those buildings online coming here pretty shortly. We were able to add two part-time housekeepers to our staff. We were currently only staffed with three full-time and two part-time housekeepers to do the both courthouses, the complex, the higher building, the fairgrounds, the outbuildings, the museums. So it was pretty, it was a pretty hard task to get the cleaning task done daily. So we've added two, and I have several more in the hiring process to get them in the system so we can keep up with everything going on with the cleaning. Overall, I guess things are going well, and we're still making progress with getting things up to a, you know, a systematic order of doing things. So lastly, I have some major and potential, potentially catastrophic issues that are facing us right now. Last minute, not too long before the meeting, and I apologize for the time. I was waiting on a couple other quotes to come in so I could address it to you properly. I sent an email out to everyone. I have paper copies if you guys need it. I'll make sure that at least Ms. Fly Nelson gets one so she can add to the record. But JSC and Community Corrections, right now, JSC has a water holding tank that is about to leak, and it could do, cause major damage to the plumbing infrastructure in the utility room over there as well as the surrounding areas. We have a boiler that the heat exchange is going out, and they're the original installs from the direction of the building. So I'm looking to get those replaced before we can, you know, before they fail on their own and then we're dealing with an emergency. Community Corrections, one of the three boilers is remaining. The other two have gone down. So there's only one, and I want to get two replaced so we can at least keep up in case the other one goes down. It's the same age as the ones that have been, that have already failed. So we're down to one for the entire facility over there. And then we have a similar situation with the water tank, water holding tank, a five-gallon tank that is in this complex building. It was purchased, and the majority of the material was purchased to install it, but it had never been installed. So I need to get that stuff on top of, might get on top of those things also because if that tank were to fail, all of the electrical infrastructure, everything is down there with the, in that same utility room. So I was initially gonna ask for permission to approach the council, but they don't meet again for another month. I was hoping to have this stuff in before they met, but it didn't work out time-wise. So I was wondering how, how do you want me to proceed with that?
So there's a couple different options. If you think these are definitely gonna fail and need to be replaced before the next meeting, you know, if it's an emergency situation like that where there's obviously no hot water, no heat, you know, something like that at these facilities, and it's an emergency that has to be addressed immediately. The council president and commission president can get together and do a, and, you know, declare an emergency and get that done in conjunction with the auditor's office if we need to. If that's something you think that's likely to happen right now, since you're here before us now, it would be great if the board would, you know, preemptively say, you know, if in your determination that it becomes an emergency and becomes something that has to be dealt with before the next council meeting, that, you know, kind of request a motion of support for, you know, an emergency declaration if needed between the commission and council, since you're here before us now and we're in a meeting.
I definitely think that it's imperative that we move on it. With the water holding tanks, if they rupture, one is leaking pretty bad right now. The other one is just starting to seep. So if they rupture, there's, you know, it's a, it's a major issue at that point. And then the boiler, in order to get that installed, it takes three to four weeks to get that equipment here to our facilities and then additional time to get it installed. So if, if it goes out right now as we're standing here, we're a month out of getting it repaired. So they'd be a month without any water or heat over there, so.
So I have a question on, on the water tanks. How large are these water tanks?
The one here is 500 gallons, and the one in JSC is a couple hundred.
Okay.
200, yeah, 200. That's our HVAC tech, Doug Nola.
Okay, and then...
In case you had any technical questions that...
And then, so you're saying that there's three systems, two of them are down in the other location?
The boilers at Community Corrections, it's three total. We're down to one. So I want to replace, get two more in there, and then if the other one should fail, at least we'll have the other two as the backup because it was, it was set up with three, and we're down to the one.
So I believe this would be more ceremonial because when you have this type of situation, it is an emergency. But I'd like to make a motion for support to have this work done and go before the presidents of both council and commission.
Yeah, I would second that motion.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Roll call, please, Mr. Auditor.
Commissioner Graham Rosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Merzinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick. Please keep us, keep us in the loop and...
I'll be in contact.
Emails coming out, make sure you loop in council president as well, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Other department head comments?
Bruce Johnson. I'm La Porte County historian. I live at 2012 South Village Road. I'm here representing the Bridge Committee. Every six months, we present the names of six people to possibly be named for bridges. The first person I have is Jimmy Bremer. We're widely known throughout La Porte County while respected by his hometown of Wannatah and the law enforcement community. He was a lifelong resident of Wannatah and graduated from Wannatah High School in 1947. As sergeant in the US Army, he served as a medic in the Korean War from 1951 to 1953, awarded the Bronze Star. He worked as alignment for Kankakee Valley REMC. He continued to climb utility poles after the organization got bucket trucks. He was commander of the Wannatah American Legion from 1964 to 1965. He served in the Wannatah Town Council from '66 to 1971, was president from 1967 to 1971. He was Cass Township Justice for the Peace from 1955 to 1962, and also served as special deputy of La Porte County Sheriff's Department for many years. Special deputy was an unpaid force, an invaluable resource for the sheriff. Bremer took care of the majority of the police calls in Wannatah and La Crosse during an era when the entire department only had a few cars. Bremer was best known for his generosity. He had a meticulous garage where tools hung on every wall, and he had two or more of every item. If someone needed a tool, Bremer gave them one. Nobody could buy anything he had. He gave it away. On Sunday mornings, he held Bremer's Sunday service in his garage, in which Hawaiian music flowed from an eight-track player. Everybody was welcome to visit, eat, and drink. People knew not to bring any food or beverages because Bremer would be offended. He provided everything free of charge. Even one autumn Sunday, Bremer arranged for a nurse to attend and gave everybody who attended a flu shot. He attended a marvelous garden and was always the first person in town to pick radishes and onions. Then he gave it away to anyone and everyone who needed it or wanted it. Bremer made bread and 12 breadmakers and gave all the loaves away. He called it Better Bread by Bremer. He died in 2005. The second one is Elliot Donnelly. The La Porte County Historical Steam Society is a group of people dedicated to restoring and preserving steam equipment, which plays such an important part in the history of American culture and improve the quality of life on a global scale never seen before. Their mission is educating future generations about the role steam machinery played in the United States. While each of the members is an important part of the La Porte County Historical Steam Society, one member, the late Elliot Donnelly, has been singled out as the strongest spoke in the society's wheel of development. The group then called La Porte County Threshermen, was incorporated, and held their first show in 1957. A few of the members purchased a steam locomotive in 1964 from Elliot Donnelly of Lake Forest, Illinois, who took an interest in the accomplishments of Ed Heston. With his generous financial assistance, from 1965 to 1968, the remainder of the 155-acre site was purchased, and a unique dual-gauge railroad was constructed. The Port County Historical Steam Society Incorporated was chartered as a non-for-profit organization December 16, 1968. Elliot Donnelly served as chairman of the board of the society from 1968 until his death, December 1975. During Donnelly's association, including while he was served as president of the organization, his generosity to the society knew few bounds. Additional land and buildings were purchased, buildings erected. The present length of dual-gauge track was established, and locomotives and equipment were given to the society by him with the knowledge that they would be faithfully maintained by members of society. The Shea Locomotive restoration was completed and dedicated August 30, 1975, just prior to Mr. Donnelly's death. Even after his death in December 1975, the society continued to benefit by the establishment of a memorial trust fund provided for the society by his... fund provided for the society by his family. Mr. Donnelly owned a number of other narrow-gauge and park-sized steam locomotives. Tragically, all of the Donnelly locomotives were damaged in a two and a half million dollar fire on May twenty sixth nineteen eighty five, which destroyed most of the large railroad equipment. In early nineteen eighty six, permission was received from the insurance company to begin salvage operations. Two thousand six was to be a museum's fiftieth anniversary. So when the board of directors decided it was time to restore and operate the Shea Locomotive, the board assembled a crew of dedicated volunteers that shared their love of the society and the locomotive. And after twenty one years of inactivity, the Shea steamed again in time for the fiftieth annual Labor Day Weekend Steam and Power Show. The president of the board directors said this restoration changed the whole place, the morale and mindset of our volunteers and the support of the public. None of this would have been possible if not for the dedication of Elliot Donnelly when his development with society began in nineteen sixty four. Third nominee is Sergeant John H. Parks. On January first nineteen forty five, the front page of the Stars and Stripes newspaper declared G.I. Joe its man of the year. The headline was accompanied by a photograph of a weary serviceman that captured the essence of the American soldier in war. The photo then appeared in newspapers across the United States. That soldier was John H. Parks of Mill Creek, Indiana, and his battle-worn face spoke volumes. At the time, nobody knew that Parks was actually missing in action. He was born in Cleveland, Ohio in nineteen nineteen, but his family lived in a small house in the industrial valley of Cuyahoga River. Parks' father abused his mother Ella, so she moved her three children to Mill Creek, Indiana, where the family resided with Milo Harness, a trapper and farm laborer. Milo and Ella married and had two more children. When the Great Depression struck, the couple could not afford five children. So the three Parks' children were sent to Brightside Orphanage in Plymouth. But John moved into a foster home and attended Union Township High School. But he quit high school after two years. He returned to his family in Mill Creek, worked on a Kingsbury farm, and at the age of twenty, he lost a finger cutting lumber at the Kingsbury Sawmill. In nineteen forty one, he worked at the Kingsbury Ordnance Plant. Then at January thirty first nineteen forty two, enlisted in the US Army, even though he was eligible for deferment due to his missing finger. He was inducted at Fort Benjamin Harrison, trained at Fort Knox, Kentucky, assigned to the Fourth Armored Division, and became a tank driver. August nineteen forty three, John received a furlough and visited his home. It was the last stay in Mill Creek. On January tenth nineteen forty four, John Parks arrived in England. He was the driver of a new Sherman tank with the name Brooklyn Boy painted on the side. Six months later, Parks' company landed at Utah Beach in France. The Fourth Armored Division traveled and fought seven hundred miles into France. On October seventeenth, Parks was promoted to sergeant and became tank commander. In early December, Parks survived a costly battle near the German border and his unit fell back to Metersheim, France. There, on December tenth nineteen forty four, a Signal Corps photographer photographed John Parks, the photo photo later seen by millions of Americans. On December twenty third nineteen forty four, near the town of Flotspielhof, Luxembourg, amidst snowy fields and icy roads, Parks' group encountered German tanks in a stand of spruce trees. Standing out of the turret, directing his crew, Parks' tank drove toward the spruce woods while other tanks provided cover. An enemy bullet killed Parks during his advance, and enemy fire engulfed the tank in flames. Two crewmen escaped. Nine days later, Parks' photo appeared on the front page of the Stars and Stripes as G.I. Joe, and in the following days, his face appeared in newspapers across the United States, including the La Porte Herald Argus, where John's mother saw her son's photo. She had not heard from him in six months. Days later, she received a telegram from the War Department that indicated her son was missing in action. She was proud of her two sons serving in the war and prayed they would return home. It would be nearly four months before the mother learned of her son's death. John H. Parks' body was never recovered. His name is engraved on the tablets of the missing at Luxembourg American Cemetery. His fame was fleeting, yet his story and his famous face of many La Porte uh sorry, his famous fleeting, yet his story and his emblem emblemic face of many La Porte County people who struggled simply and sacrificed their lives for others. My next person is Ruth Clark Saban. Ruth Clark Saban was born in Massachusetts. Uh eighteen thirty two, she married Sidney Saban in Groton, New York. In eighteen fifty, the Saban family moved to La Porte County, Indiana. There, in Noble Township, they bought more than five hundred acres and Sidney farmed the land. In eighteen seventy, Sidney and Ruth Saban moved to La Porte and lived on Michigan Avenue. Sidney became president of the First National Bank. He was an excellent financier and made quite a fortune. Unfortunately, he died in eighteen eighty six at the age of seventy two, but left about one hundred thirty thousand dollars in his estate. Ruth, who was twelve years older, was eighty four at that time and wondered about her future without her husband. She decided to build a home where she and other elderly single women could live too. She bought an acre of land at the corner of Michigan Avenue and South Avenue for one thousand dollars. She hired John Van Oostal, one of the most prominent architects of Chicago, who also designed the Second La Porte County Courthouse in nineteen eight in eighteen forty eight. The Ruth Saban Home opened on November twentieth eighteen eighty nine, and Ruth was the first person to live there. There were three plors and thirty five rooms. There was a barn, a horse and buggy, a cow for milk, a chicken house for eggs, and a vegetable garden. The women all helped with cleaning the home and preparing foods for the winter. In nineteen twenty two, electric lights and a telephone were added, and in nineteen twenty five, a Ford automobile replaced the horse and buggy. Over the years, many single women moved there to live in these small apartments. In nineteen oh four, the home was promoted as one of the most useful institutions in La Porte County. Any elderly lady of good moral character and habits who was accepted by the board of management could become an inmate of the home for the rest of her natural life by the payment of five hundred dollars at the time of entrance and an additional two thousand five hundred dollars to cover the expense of caring for her. Ruth Saban died in eighteen ninety four at age ninety two. She left thirty three thousand dollars to support the home and also left funds for the Presbyterian Church in Union Mills and the Union Mills Cemetery, where she was buried near her husband and son. The Ruth Clark Saban Home closed its doors in two thousand sixteen after one hundred and twenty eight years as a home for hundreds of single older women. My next nominee is Russell Allen Phillips. He was born in Greencastle, Indiana in nineteen sixteen to Reverend Russell and Mary Kelsey Allen Phillips. In nineteen thirty, when he was fourteen, he moved with his family to La Porte, Indiana, where his father serves as the pastor of the First United Methodist Church. Phillips graduated from La Porte High School in nineteen thirty four. He later attended Purdue University and graduated with a degree in forestry and conservation in nineteen forty. On November seventh nineteen forty one, Russell Allen Phillips enlisted in the US Army Corps at Fort Benjamin Harrison, became an outstanding pilot. On May twenty seventh nineteen forty three, he and his crew, including Olympic runner Louis Zamperini and Francis McNamara, were on a search and rescue mission from Oahu, Oahu'i to find a missing plane. However, their battered B-244 Liberator bomber called Green Hornet had mechanical failure, and Phillips had to ditch the plane into the Pacific Ocean. Eight members of the crew died. Phillips, McNamara, and Zamperini managed to survive together in a life raft for more than thirty days when McNamara died. After floating in the Pacific for more than two thousand miles, Phillips and Zamperini were picked up on the forty seventh day by a Japanese patrol boat. These two POWs were then taken to separate Japanese prison camps where they were starved and abused for thirty months. They were finally liberated in September nineteen forty five. Like most survivors of World War II, Phillips preferred not to talk about his war experiences while returning home. Following World War II, Reverend Phillips joined together and married his son, Russell Allen, to Cecile Cece Perry on November tenth nineteen forty five in Terre Haute. Phillips had two children, and they lived many years at twelve oh nine Clay Street in La Porte, Indiana, where Al worked for a time as a painter and salesman for Benefum's Paint and Glass and as an office worker for Alice Chalmers. Later, he and Cece became respected educators in the La Porte Community School Corporation. Mr. Phillips taught science at Central Junior High and Boston Middle School and retired from Cassie Middle School in nineteen seventy six. Friends said that Al was calm, cool, quiet, and a good teacher, but they knew barely anything about his World War II experiences. He died in Marietta, Georgia on December eighteenth nineteen ninety eight, and Mrs. Phillips, who taught English, passed away in November eighteenth two thousand two. They were buried side by side in Pine Lake Cemetery. In two thousand seventeen, an engraved brick in memory and honor of Russell Allen Phillips was placed on the Veterans Walk at the entrance to Soldiers Memorial Park on Pine Lake Avenue. The incredible World War II story of Phillips and Zamperini's survival was told in the two thousand ten bestselling book Unbroken by Laura Hillenbrand, made into a major motion picture directed by Angelina Jolie in two thousand fourteen. My last person is John Lloyd Wright, who was born December twelfth eighteen ninety two, was the second oldest of the six children born to Frank Lloyd and Catherine Tobin Wright. The family lived in Oak Park, Illinois, in what is now known as the Frank Lloyd Wright Home and Studio. Frank Lloyd Wright was practicing with the famous Chicago architects Adler and Sullivan. John soon realized he had a talent for architecture but needed training. His father welcomed his son to come train with him, and John decided to take the opportunity, uh but found it difficult working under his father's dominating personality. In nineteen seventeen, John accompanied his father to oversee the construction of a new Imperial Hotel in Tokyo, Japan. Because but because of an argument over his salary, John was fired and the two became estranged. Without a job, John decided to focus instead on his hobbies. During the construction of his the Imperial Hotel in Japan, he observed the interlocking log beams that were designed by his father to resist earthquakes. John used the concept to create three-quarter inch wooden logs that could interlock to create miniature buildings. On August twenty third nineteen twenty, John Lloyd Wright received a patent for his wooden toys, which he called Lincoln Logs, in honor of the former US president who spent his formative years in Indiana in a cabin. Was said to be one of the first toys promoted for both boys and girls and became a huge success. In nineteen twenty three, John and his family moved to Long Beach, a residential area along Lake Michigan in Indiana. His brother-in-law and sister, John and Catherine Wright Baxter, lived in Michigan City at that time. That same year, their daughter and his niece, Anne Baxter, was born in Michigan City and later became the famous Broadway movie and television actress. John Lloyd Wright established his architectural practice and had an office at five nineteen in the Warren Building in Michigan City. In nineteen twenty four, he built a home and studio for his family called Studio Court in Long Beach on Belt Plain Trail near Stop Twenty Five. Over the years, Wright was commissioned to design one or two homes a year in Long Beach. They were built on the hillsides of the dunes or along the shores of Lake Michigan. His architecture reflected the natural beauty of the dunes with the colors of the sand, stone materials, and wood shingles, and built on many levels on the steep terrains of the surrounding dune-lent hills and forest. His homes and public buildings included the Miller House in Villa Zee in nineteen twenty six, Long Beach Elementary School in nineteen twenty seven, the Kutcoff House in Red Oaks in nineteen twenty eight, the Long Beach Town Hall in nineteen thirty one, the Dunes Arcade Hotel in nineteen thirty three, the Burnham House in nineteen thirty four, Cool Spring School in nineteen thirty seven, the Jackson House, the House of Tile, and Shangri-La, also known as the House of Seven Levels in nineteen thirty eight. In nineteen thirty nine, a fire in the garage and studio at his home destroyed most of his drawings. Then during World War II, commissions for homes stopped, but he designed administrative and technical buildings and office residences for the Kingsbury Ordnance Plant. In nineteen forty six, John Lloyd Wright left Indiana and moved with his third wife to Del Mar, California, and had success designing more than fifty homes and buildings in the San Diego area. He died in Del Mar in nineteen seventy two at age eighty and is buried next to his siblings and his niece Anne Baxter in Unity Chapel Park near Tulliesin in Spring Green, Wisconsin. In nineteen ninety nine, John Lloyd Wright's Lincoln Logs were entered into the National Toy Hall of Fame, and several of his homes in Long Beach have been listed on the National Register of Historic Places by the United States Department of the Interior. So those are the six nominees.
Phew. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate that.
All right. Amazing job, Ruth. Amazing, as always.
Thank you.
I would uh take the motion that we accept their recommendation for the bridge naming so they can get the signs made and get them posted.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Uh any further discussion? Very good. Hearing none. Uh roll call please, Ms. Roder.
Commissioner Rosinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Graham Rosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And thank your team. Thank you.
Good job, Ruth.
Yes. Right. Uh any other department head comments? Seeing none here.
Oh, wait, because now, since we are under department head comments, I I do wanna address a situation with the uh Flood Committee. So as a department head myself, um I was assigned to work on the flood project and as I was looking at the um council meeting, there were two things on their agenda on Monday night. On the new business number two, consider authorization of county council attorney Guy DiMartino to perform professional services for the Board of Commissioners with regard to flooding in the annex and insurance. Any services performed for the Board of Commissioners would be paid by the Board of Commissioners. And then number two, number eight, excuse me, number eight, appointment of county members to property damage insurance claim committee. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that when we have projects much like our Michigan City Courthouse project, they are commissioner projects. And with them being commissioner projects, it is the commissioners that decide either to appoint one of the three commissioners to that project or like we did back with the Michigan City Courthouse, when we gave the project to the auditor and because she was in the midst of the project and administration changed, as the treasurer, she was able to go ahead and take that project with her and take it down to the treasures and finish off that project. So with number two, um going ahead and paying the attorney for the council, if a council member is appointed onto this board, then ultimately, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, the commission has to pay for the attorney fees for all attorneys, but I it's not something that the council can come back and tell the commission that we have to pay for something. They would be acting as the coun- council attorney, and then we would still have to pay that, but it's not under they don't tell us that under our their direction, they're working for us, correct?
Yes. Yes. So um in this circumstance, this is a little bit uh interesting to see the council's agenda. Um the commission has the power to contract. The commission, as far as I know, has not contracted Guy DiMartino to act on its behalf with regard to the flood. Therefore, the commission is not responsible for funding Guy DiMartino's work uh on behalf of the commission. The council has its own professional services budget. If the council chooses to utilize Mr. DiMartino, that comes out of their budget. But unless the commission appoints uh professional services or contracts with them, the commission, as you just said, Commissioner Graham Rosa, is not responsible for paying that.
But I do believe because he's working on with the council on the flood, I do believe that he should be because I think that when they work on the council, and I I think that this is really transparency. This is something that we all talk about because we're having this discussion in an open meeting. Um they kind of threw this on the agenda and there was no discussions prior. So I I think that it was really important that we have it here. But I'm not opposed to paying those bills if they have questions at these flood meetings because it would be a flood-concerned issue, and I believe that they have only a set amount of monies for their council meetings and for what they. for their council meetings and for what they do at that point. But I just wanted to bring that up, and we can work out the details later. Number eight, again, appropriate, appoint, appointment of council members to property damage insurance claim committee. So, again, this is something that a lot of people complain about, adding layers of government. The way this works is, this is an insurance claim. I want everyone to know that this is not being paid by the taxpayers' dollars. This was a claim that went through an insurance company. The insurance company, I will say, has been wonderful working with us. We've had a few kinks and, and many of you out there would agree that when you deal with insurance companies, it's not all smooth sailing, but it's just a lot of things that you've got to work through. And I think that we're in the right direction and we're moving forward. And in the flood right now, we are definitely emptying floors out. We are starting construction on some of the floors. But for the council to appoint this insurance claim committee, it's pretty blunt that what happens is we work with the insurance company. The work that's being done, the vendors are submitting those claims to the insurance company. The insurance company is approving it and then turning around and sending a check now to the county, and then we're paying out on it. So, I can tell you that at the beginning, the way I had it set up was because we are not paying these vendors. I had it set up where we would check off, yes, they were here. Yes, this work was done. That work was being sent to the insurance company, and then the insurance company was paying directly to the vendor. If we're gonna start adding layers and we're gonna have the commission project and then the council's gonna step in and they want to do a property damage insurance claim committee, there's really nothing for them to investigate. There's nothing for them to oversee the claims because we, as the commissioners, we're not overseeing the claims. We're submitting them to the insurance company and they're paying it. So, again, I don't want to step on anybody's toes, but the idea that they would want to come in and step on the toes of the commission and the insurance company, especially the insurance company, who's already paying that out, there's nothing that they can say to the, what are they gonna say to the insurance company when the insurance company ultimately decides what the claims are?
I, I, I would just like to say, from a legal perspective, it seems that the council's only interest or necessary involvement would be if there's going to be a county expense. Like if insurance falls short and there needs to be an appropriation, then the county would need, the county council would need to be involved. But what you've just stated, Commissioner, I think is exactly right. From a legal perspective, this is a commissioner project. So, adding a layer of, of government or bureaucracy from the council, I don't, I don't see a basis for that in the law or from a policy perspective.
I would just say, if I may, in terms of my understanding, if I understand correctly, the council's intent, and I'm sure Attorney Jones is, is fully aware of this, that per Indiana Code, it says if, if the insurance proceeds are used within twelve months to replace or repair the damaged assets, the fiscal officer, the State Board of Con said, "That's me," auditor, may appropriate the funds, essentially step into the role of the council, may appropriate the funds for that purpose. Otherwise, the funds would need, otherwise, the funds would need to be appropriated by the council, county council. So, the way I view it, and Attorney Jones, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that I am a ministerial figure for you.
Yes.
If the money comes to the county, but if the money's being paid directly from the insurance company to the, to the vendors, then, then the auditor's not needed.
And were you involved when, when they did the Michigan City Courthouse?
You're not talking about any insurance claim. Obviously, you're just talking about the project. No, that was auditor. I'm sorry, former auditor, Treasurer Winsky was the project manager.
And when you became the auditor, you were not part of it?
No, I wasn't. Keep in mind, this provision I just read is specific to insurance.
Oh, insurance.
And essentially, the notion, I think, is that, that it's a, the commissioners control the assets of Lepore County, the buildings, and if there's damage to a building and money comes in that's specific to repair the building, it's, it's your money, in a sense, to oversee. I'm a ministerial figure to, to, to appropriate. And the council, I must say, has left out it from that process. But, but if the insurance proceeds are not used within twelve months, then, you know, if money comes into the county, then the county can be involved. And I'll defer to Attorney Jones on all the, the ins and outs of, of that, that, those parts. I hope that's helpful.
So, I mean, I'm not looking to eliminate anybody. I, I, I have, from the beginning, invited council members to come out and look at the site. We have a list of POs that have been paid out. They're more than welcome to come into the office and look at those files. But the idea that we're going to start adding layers of government and make a project that we need to go fairly quickly when we are, we have really made sure that we have covered, working with union, making sure that we're working with local vendors. And a lot of these people that are out here working, they are mom and pop little companies. And we need to make sure that these bills are not tied up in a council capacity or in an auditor's office. These bills need to be paid in timely fashion. And I would want these individuals to get paid as quickly as possible. So, how do you think that we should proceed?
Well, Commissioner, as the executive and as the appointee who is handling this project, I think you are more than welcome to ask for general commission approval to make the process so that vendors are paid directly by the insurance company. That appears to be the most efficient way to, to process this. Obviously, if there is a shortfall in some regard between what the insurance company is willing to pay and what the county needs, then it will go through the typical appropriation process involving the fiscal body. But as Auditor Stamos just quoted Indiana law, you know, if the money came to us, it could actually flow at your direction to the vendors. But we can make it even more simple, as you've suggested, and, you know, ask for a, a motion to authorize the insurance company to pay the vendors directly.
So, I would like to make a motion that we revert this back to the way that it was originally intended and that we would work with the insurance company and have them pay the vendors directly.
I agree, and I second your motion.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Is that, yes, absolutely. All right, very good. Any further discussion?
And I would just like to say, I really appreciate the council's help on this. I still have an open door policy. You know, it is a construction site. We are, I am a full-time commissioner. I'm here from eight in the morning usually to about five in the afternoon. If anyone would like to walk through the site, I'm more than willing to walk anyone through the site. Any one of the three commissioners has the ability to get up to those floors. It is a construction site. Make no doubt that there is a construction site there. And so, for the safety, it's not like we want to run everybody up and down into these sites. So, we do have to be careful, but it is definitely opened to the council.
Great. All right. Thank you. Sounds like a good streamline. Not hearing any other discussion. Stronger roll call, please.
Commissioner Graham Rosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Brusinski?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you very much. Any other department head comments? Yeah, I'd like to be heard briefly on a related issue. I just want to commend Commissioner Graham Rosa for the work that she's put in in this regard. No one can predict when a pipe is going to burst, and I'm sure there are a lot of other counties in Indiana and across the country that would have just hired a public adjuster or gone a route that is more expensive. But instead, Commissioner Graham Rosa has dedicated a tremendous amount of time and energy to managing this product, project. And I think everybody in Lepore County or anyone who utilizes county services is in her debt for the amount of work and the time and the energy that she has put into this.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Absolutely. I would echo those same sentiments. Right. Seeing no other department head comments? I would move on to requests. I'll call to maybe any requests here this afternoon, this morning. All right. I see nothing under old business. Under new business, consider Lepore County Courthouse Assessment Contract. We've went through, we went, as many of you know, we've had some issues continue to deteriorate in our courthouse. We've got some leaking from the roof. We've got some different leaking in the basement. I know members of the council and commission have seen, you know, either in person or seen the photos of, you know, some water coming out of, both out of some exterior walls and now interior wall, interior split walls in the basement. Those are something that, that, you know, with, with water flowing through the walls, it's, it's, it's becoming more and more crucial to figure out exactly where that water's coming from and obviously figuring out exactly what's going on with the roof and some other mechanical systems in there as well. I know we forwarded this, forwarded this out. We've had some meetings both with our new facilities director, as well as had a, had a teams meeting last Friday with the council president and vice president as well. I've had several different meetings. I know, I believe we have someone from Etika on, on Zoom right now. I can't recall if it's gonna be our architect or engineer who's on. Seth, do you see anybody named Toby or Don?
Yes, this, this is Don Higgins.
Good morning, Don. We kind of briefly, kind of update us and walk us through what, what you've got for us here today.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I'm sitting in for Toby. I don't have any documentation with me. Do you have it in front of you?
We, we do here in our packets this morning.
Okay, I'm not prepared to, to review it with you right now. Sorry.
Okay, no, no, that's, that, that's fine. So, some of your, some of your history here, you've worked on roughly a hundred different historical building projects, I believe you were saying, as well as we recognized through the Indiana Historic Preservation. You have a Historic Preservation Recognition as well?
I've worked on dozens of one hundred-plus buildings. I think that's the way that reads. That renovations and issues regarding water infiltration, historic structures as well. Currently, I have applied for the, to be, to be put on the list of, it's just a list of architects that have applied for the, that's technically a certification. It's just a registration. So, I was told that within a month or so, that would be coming, coming through.
That was through Indiana Historical Landmarks?
That's through the Department of, that's the Department of, the, I, DHR, Department of,
Department of Natural Resources?
Department of, whatever. It's the DHR. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I don't have the,
Department of Natural Resources.
The full name in front of me. I can look that up real quick.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I, I did look at what came through in the email, and I can say that it was a, it was a contract and it had some information on it. But at the end of the contract, it didn't have a dollar amount. And I understand that this is engineering. It doesn't have to go out to bid unless it hits a certain dollar amount. But with the fact that he can't really explain a lot right now, the other gentleman isn't here to explain that to us and that we don't have a dollar amount on this, I would like to table it. And then also, I know we don't have to put it out to bid, but perhaps we should put it out to bid or at least get another company or two to go ahead and give us their assessment or their, you know, what, how they would go about assessing this project.
Sure.
So, that would be my motion.
It would technically be an RFP and RFQ, not, not a bid process because there's, it's engineering professional services, so be a. I'm, I, I believe a copy that was shared with me for review did have a dollar amount of seventy-nine thousand dollars or, right, I think, exactly. I thought it did. But I, perhaps I'm misremembering this. I thought I reviewed a contract and it didn't.
Yeah, mine, I, I don't, I didn't have that. And then right now in the packet, I've only got one sheet. And kind of that was the issue when I asked a couple of days ago. Because when I had first seen it go through, I actually asked our secretary, "Where's the contract?" And they had said it was in an email. So, when I pulled it out of the email, it didn't actually have a dollar amount. So, I mean, I just think, you know, for, like I said, transparency, it would probably be best if we hold this over one month and then we can get all our ducks in order and then we can, we can bring it back. That's my motion.
Okay, so.
And I agree. That was what I plan to ask is, did we put out RFQs? Who is this company and what are they gonna do? Because the only thing I got on the email was to ask to put them on the agenda. So, I don't really know a lot about them or exactly what they want to do. I agree with, with you, Don, that we need to put out RFQs to find out if, and we need to know what we're getting. So, I would agree with a second to your motion to table this.
Okay, so I think it's just clear that if, whether the motion is to table this or whether the motion is to seek RFPs, I think that's important. Because there could, there could be two motions. I mean, it's, it's just from a point of order standpoint. Whether you want to just simply table it is fine. It seems like there's a motion and a second for that. But both commissioners mentioned also requesting RFPs.
So, then I'll retract that motion. Will you retract your second?
I'll retract your second, yeah.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to send it out to RFP or RFQ, whichever one we need to do. And then, but I don't want to, what I don't want to do is eliminate the company that has already been here. So, I want to give them the opportunity to give us a dollar amount to submit something and be able to come here and explain what it is that, you know, the work that they're, they're doing. And then also get other people to, give them the opportunity on an RFQ or an RFP. That's my motion.
I second that motion.
Okay, very good. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, I appreciate that. We'll get, we'll get to work on that as well. And if you could put something together for us, that would be great. All right.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Certainly. Yep. Roll call, please, Mr. Auditor.
Commissioner Graham Rosa?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Brusinski?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. All right, next we have, consider opening the yearly bids for our paving things. And there's a bunch of classes here from class eleven all the way down to seventeen. Alan Stevens, Highway Superintendent.
Good morning, Mr. President, Commissioners. This is kind of like Christmas for me, this bid opening. I see Andrew has a, a large stack and it's, it's kind of exciting. We're looking to incorporate some, some new and progressive pavement maintenance strategies into our toolbox this year. So, I'm watching.
I just want to read out what I'm.
I'm excited to see that big stacks.
Oh, okay. So, this is from C.E. Hughes, and this is a bid proposal for pavement markings. And these were all timely received, correct?
I believe they were all timely. This was received on February twenty-seventh at two twenty-two P.M. I will hand this off to our Highway Commissioner. It appears that the, this is, this is broken down into several different subparts. So, we have price per linear foot. Fifteen, one hundred and fifty thousand linear foot, broken down into twenty-five hundred dollars and some other subparts. Twenty-five hundred dollars for mobilization for the two hundred thousand linear feet, twenty-five hundred dollar flat fee for mobilization of three hundred thousand linear feet. We also have stop bar marking at fifteen dollars for each of those linear feet and nine hundred and fifty dollars for railroad crossing marking. Turn arrow marking is a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, turn arrow marking is a hundred and fifty dollars for each of those, so I will turn this bid over to you, Mr. Stevens. Okay. Our second bid is from Central Paving Incorporated, this was received on February twenty-second at twelve twenty-five PM. This is for bituminous materials. Uh, this is, uh, the, the part of this for optional bid of application materials only, the cost of application is forty-one cents per gallon. The, sorry. The ex, the individual portions are broken down into here into various amounts. Um, I'm not sure what the commission's preference is with regard to this. Um, but I can also pass this off to, right, I can pass this off to, um, Mr. Stevens as well. It's broken into several different subparts. But it was timely received. Here. Next, we have from the Klink Group, uh, this is also for bituminous materials. This was received at twelve fifty-eight PM on February twenty-eighth.
Mr. Johnson, sorry to interrupt you, um, I think some of the amounts, uh, from that, normally we don't read all the subclasses, but I think there's one or two parts of that that normally we read out loud.
Sure.
Um, I don't think they go into all the full granular detail, but I think there's some, certain parts that we read out.
Sure, go ahead and bring that, bring that.
Just because, but all this will be, uh, obviously available for review by the public, uh, immediately following the, uh, this meeting.
Sure, of course, well, I read, I believe, all of the subparts for the, um, for the CE Hughes Milling, so I can read more, um, from the Central Paving Incorporated bid.
Thank you.
No problem. Just wanna be conscientious of everyone's time, but I know that this is important to have this on the record here. Uh, let's see here.
Usually, most of these bids have a covered, uh, the companies who are submitting them have a quick cover sheet of a list on the top for us to speed up the process.
I, I am, I am aware of that and here-
Sorry, that one's lacking that.
No, I, I understand, I mean, I, this, I mean, the, I, the only thing here, it says for the optional bid of application materials only is fourteen cents per gallon. The rest of this is broken into other parts regarding previous projects that they've done, et cetera, so, I mean, is that, is that the number that you're looking for?
On the scrub seal?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, okay, so the forty-one cents per gallon on the cover sheet, I think that's the only number here that we're, we're concerned with?
Thank you.
So that is their bid, cost of application forty-one cents per gallon. Next, we have the Klink Group, received twelve fifty-eight PM on February twenty-eighth. Here, um, they're bituminous, this is a bituminous materials, uh, bid. So, uh, per five thousand gallon truckload, the product of dust stop is for county storage, two dollars and two cents, vendor storage, two dollars and two cents, and less than a truckload, two dollars and thirty-two cents. For the product A E N T, five thousand gallon truckload, two dollars and seventy-five cents, less than a truckload, three dollars and five cents. Vendor storage, two dollars and seventy-five cents, or county storage, two dollars and seventy-five cents. For A E ninety, five thousand gallon truckload, two dollars and fifty-five cents, less than a truckload, two dollars and eighty-five cents. Vendor storage, two dollars and fifty-five cents, and county storage, two dollars and fifty-five cents. For RS two, five thousand gallon truckload, it's two dollars and fifty-five cents, less than a truckload, two dollars and eighty-five cents. Vendor storage and county storage both, two dollars and fifty-five cents. A E one fifty, uh, five thousand gallon truckload, two dollars and eighty-five cents, less than a truckload, three dollars and fifteen cents. Vendor storage and county storage, two dollars and eighty-five cents. For product A E P, uh, five thousand gallon truckload, three dollars and twenty-five cents, less than a truckload, three dollars and fifty-five cents. Vendor storage or county storage is three dollars and twenty-five cents. For A E P L, cost per five thousand gallon truckload, two dollars and fifty cents, less than a truckload, two dollars and eighty cents. Vendor storage, two dollars and fifty cents, county storage, two dollars and fifty cents. For A E ninety S, two dollars and eighty-five cents for a five thousand gallon truckload, less than a truckload, three dollars and fifteen cents. For vendor storage or county storage, two dollars and eighty-five cents. Uh, for the application of A E ninety, it's thirty cents per gallon, for application only of A E ninety S, thirty cents per gallon. Uh, the application prices are based on applying a minimum of twelve thousand gallons per day. Yeah, there you go. Next, we have a bid from Asphalt Materials, this is also for bituminous materials. This was received at twelve twenty-eight PM on February twenty-eighth. Okay, so, for bituminous materials, for A E ninety per gallon, less than a full truckload, two dollars for, uh, forty-nine cents and for hundreds of a cent, or thousands of a cent. Um, delivered price, uh, at customer facility is two point one nine four. Job site is two point one nine four. Uh, for A E ninety S per gallon, less than a full truckload premium is two point eight, eight, nine, four per gallon. Customer-
While, while you're reading that, I'm just gonna step out for just a minute, um, please continue reading, uh, I'll be, I'll be right back.
Sure. Uh, customer facility or, uh, job site, it's the same delivered price, two dollars, uh, five nine four. And then, um, for A E F per gallon, two dollars four ninety-four for customer or facility job site delivered price, two dollars one ninety-four. And additional terms is, uh, minimum freight is fifty-seven hundred gallons and the demurrage is a hundred and fifty dollars an hour after, um, two hours, which I think it says this, the first, the first two hours are free. Just gonna make sure there's no other additional materials here. I think they've submitted two copies of sent bid amounts. Okay, next we have from Accurate Striping, a bid proposal for pavement markings, excuse me. Uh, we have a check here for a thousand dollars and we have, uh, the itemized proposal for pavement striping. This is per linear feet, uh, or per, per linear foot of marking, so for a hundred and fifty thousand linear feet, mobilization, it's two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, the railroad crossing, six hundred and fifty dollars each, stop bar marking is eighteen dollars and turn arrow marking is two hundred and fifty dollars apiece. Uh, at the two hundred thousand linear foot mark, it's the mobilization cost is still twenty-two hundred and fifty dollars. The RX crossing amount is still six hundred and fifty dollars, stop bar marking is eighteen dollars and turn arrow marking is two hundred and twenty-five dollars each. At the three hundred thousand linear foot mark, same mobilization price, two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. The railroad crossing marking is six hundred and fifty dollars, stop bar marking eighteen dollars and turn arrow marking of two hundred and twenty-five dollars each. So there is no, um, difference in pricing depending on the linear footage, starting at a hundred and fifty. Next, we have from Traffic Control Specialists, um, this is also for pavement markings, of course. This was received on, uh, February twenty-eighth at three oh four PM by our Auditor's Office. Um, at one hundred and fifty thousand linear feet, it is, mobilization is seven hundred and fifty dollars each. That is the same at two hundred thousand linear feet and three hundred thousand linear feet, that's same, someone, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Um, for four inch solid white paint, twenty-one cents per linear foot at a hundred and fifty thousand, um, linear feet. Um, for, also for, at a hundred and fifty thousand linear feet, uh, twenty-one cents per four inch yellow paint, four inch for each skip yellow paint, uh, for four inch solid yellow epoxy, that's thirty-nine cents per linear feet at the hundred and fifty thousand linear foot price, for four inch solid white epoxy, that's thirty-nine, um, cents per linear foot at the hundred and fifty thousand linear foot, um, area, and then four inch skip yellow epoxy, thirty-nine cents at the hundred and fifty thousand linear foot mark or, uh, uh, length. The RXR, or, excuse me, railroad crossing marking is seven hundred and five dollars each. Stop bar marking is twelve dollars and fifty-five cents per linear foot and the turn arrow marking is a hundred and sixty-five dollars per, it says each. So at the two hundred thousand linear foot, uh, uh, cap, we have mobilization cost is the same as at the hundred and fifty thousand mark, which is seven hundred and fifty dollars each. Solid white paint, four inch solid white paint, four inch solid yellow paint and four inch skip yellow paint. All of those are twenty-one cents per linear foot. For four inch solid yellow epoxy, four inch white epoxy and four inch skip yellow epoxy, those are all thirty-nine cents per linear foot. Railroad crossing marking is seven hundred and five dollars each, stop bar marking is twelve dollars and fifty-five cents per linear foot and turn arrow marking is a hundred and sixty-five dollars apiece. At the three hundred thousand linear foot mark, we have mobilization is once again seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, four inch solid white paint, four inch solid yellow paint and four inch skip yellow paint, all of those are twenty cents per linear foot. For four inch solid yellow epoxy, four inch solid white epoxy and four inch skip yellow epoxy, it's thirty-eight cents per linear foot. At the railroad crossing marking, it's seven hundred and five dollars each. The stop bar marking is twelve dollars and fifty-five cents per linear, per linear foot and the turn arrow marking is a hundred and sixty-five dollars apiece. Go. It is. Okay, next we have from Milestone Contractors North Incorporated, received on March first at nine oh six AM by the Auditors, this is a bid for hot asphalt concrete. This is, got a very handy cover page. Number eight, type B binder mix is their base bid, seventy, eighty-four dollars a ton. Number eleven, type B surface mix, ninety-four dollars per ton. An alternate bid is number five base, type B base mix, eighty-two dollars per ton. Number nine, type B surface mix, ninety-four dollars per ton. Number twelve, twi- type B surface mix, ninety-four dollars per ton. Number eight, type C binder mix, eighty-five dollars per ton. Number eleven, type C surface mix, a hundred and one dollars per ton. Fog spray, twenty cents per linear foot. Joint seal, one dollar per linear foot and prices are for mainline paving only. I think that's the, yep. There you go. There you go. Yep.
We thought the bridge naming thing went long.
No, no. Are, are you not entertained?
I'd make the motion that we turn over all the bids to the Highway Department, right, was that the last bid?
No, we still have more.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
Beginning.
I'm sorry. We've only just begun, as the carpenters would say. Uh, we have bid proposal, class number thirteen for pavement markings. Um, this was received at twelve forty-one PM on February twenty-eighth. I believe this is from Avalanche, company's called Avalanche. Um, this is written a little bit differently, uh, I believe these prices are the same at the hundred and fifty thousand uh, linear foot, two hundred thousand linear foot and three hundred thousand linear foot amounts, because that's how it's been filled out, it looks like the prices hold for, for each. Uh, for mobilization, this is handwritten and a bit difficult to read, it looks like maybe four thousand dollars per day. Uh, for, and then there's no quote given for the four inch, the four inch solid marks or skip marks, for railroad crossing marking, it says eight hundred dollars per set, stop bar marking. I believe this says four hundred dollars each. Uh, it's very hard to read though, and then turn arrow marking, it appears to be three hundred dollars each. So, uh, there's a second page of this quote. It looks like for a set of railroad markings, it's eight hundred dollars, for stop bar, a set of them, excuse me, no, each, it's four hundred dollars. For arrows, it's three hundred dollars apiece and, oh, excuse me, mobilization is only four hundred dollars per day, not four thousand dollars per day, and those numbers appear to hold for, you know, you're, you've requested bids at a hundred and fifty thousand linear feet, two hundred thousand linear feet, three hundred thousand linear feet. Those prices hold across all three of those distances. There's also included here a check, um, to the treasurer, I believe for a thousand dollars. Yes. Okay, I thought you said this was like Christmas. I'm Jewish, so. Okay. All right, next up, we have-
Commissioners, may I sit down for a little bit?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Thank you.
Please, please feel free and, um, yeah, there's a-
Pavement Solutions Incorporated, this is a bid for bituminous materials, received, it appears to be February twenty-eighth at two oh five PM. Okay, chip seal application, per gallon, a dollar twenty-two. Scrub seal application, a dollar thirty-eight per gallon. That's for pavement preservation?
We don't have a whole lot more left if you want to take off.
That might be the, as far as, just wanna double check, I don't wanna misspeak here. Yeah, that is the totality of what they've actually bid on this project.
Thank you.
We have another bid from Pavement Solutions, this is for micro-surfacing. This was received on February twenty-eighth at two oh five PM by our auditor. Okay. Here we have for micro-surfacing, uh, unit price, three dollars and seventy-five cents. For micro-surfing multiple course, single unit price at, uh, four dollars and eighty-five cents. Believe the units, the, the unit amounts are explained later in the, in the bid. Wow. We lost the bridge guy. Thank you, Bruce. Okay, we have from Pavement Solutions, fiberized asphalt crack sealant. This was received at two oh five on February twenty-eighth by our auditor. All right, uh, for fiberized asphalt crack sealant, their unit price is, uh, sixty cents per unit. For a product called PG sixty-four dash twenty-two, six hundred and fifty dollars per unit. For PG seventy-six dash twenty-two, it's seven hundred and fifty dollars per unit. For polypropylene fibers, uh, it's forty-four hundred dollars per unit. So for those first unit, those three units I just mentioned, that is all per ton. And then the hourly rate and the equipment rental rate per hour applied is six hundred and ninety-five dollars per hour. One more from Pavement Solutions, this was received also at two oh five PM on February twenty-eighth by our auditor, this is for the asphalt emulsion slurry seal. This is for the asphalt emulsion slurry seal. I have to run a pocket knife. For the asphalt emo- emulsion slurry seal, the unit price is two dollars and ninety-five cents. So that's per unit. Two more. Reef Riley. This is for fiberized crack sealant. This was received this morning, March first at nine thirty-one AM. Crack seal hot applied per plan, unit price per pound, five dollars and ten cents. I think that is the totality of their actual bid here. Because it's just for that one application. Okay? Okay. Uh, also from Reef Riley, Reef Riley, uh, hot asphalt concrete. This was received this morning, nine thirty-one AM, March first. And base bid for number eight B binder mix per ton, sixty-three dollars and forty-two cents. Base bid for type B surface mix per ton, sixty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. Alternate bid for type B base mix per ton, sixty-nine dollars and fifteen, teen cents. Type E surface mix per ton, seventy-four dollars and fifty-eight cents. Type E surface mix per ton, seventy-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. Type C binder mix per ton, seventy-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. Type C surface mix per ton, ninety-one dollars. Unit price per foot for fog spray per foot is twenty-five cents. Joint seal adhesive per foot, one dollar. Just want to make sure there's nothing else tucked in here. And I believe that concludes the bidding opening process. Thank you all for your rapid attention. I see there's several contractors or bidders in attendance and it, as is tradition, will be out in the, the hallway here immediately following to, uh, allow everybody to look at their competitors.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Do we need a motion like, like Commissioner Rosinsky made to?
Yeah, a motion to return all the bids to the highway department, uh, for their, uh, approval and possibly report back, uh, at a future meeting. We, normally we, we, we accept all bids anyway, because things vary from day to day. But, um, we always give them to the highway superintendent and they, uh, come back and give us their recommendations on what they're going to do. Of course, the guys have been doing this for a long time. So, uh, I make motion to turn them over to the department.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Uh, as Commissioner Haney has stepped out, Commissioner Kramarosa, you are, uh, the chair of this meeting.
So we'd like to open it for discussion. No discussion. We can go ahead and take a vote.
Aye.
Commissioner Rosinsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Kramarosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney. Two ayes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Look forward to you coming back with less paperwork. So as we continue on the new business, uh, see, consider permission to approve, to approach coun- council for funding regarding IT equipment. Um, Mike Callahan from Community Corrections.
We're, we're actually from the Juvenile Services Center.
Okay, juvenile. Did you want to talk?
Yes, ma'am. So, uh, as far as the IT equipment goes, we are looking to, uh, get another camera mounted on the back of the building. Because we have had issues with community corrections participants walking across our property. We catch them as much as we can and inform community corrections and they deal with it as it happens, but we can't get them all. And there is, there's no line of sight on the back of the building. So we would like to approach the council to get that paid for. And I did turn in a quote to all of you for the camera, the integration with the communication system and the running of cable, because there's never been one previously on the back of the building.
Right. So I did go out there and I went for a tour and I, I did see what you were talking about. And it is something that we really need to, uh, address. So can I get a motion?
I, I also have, uh, computers to talk about.
Okay, you want to talk?
Yeah, please. So, um, we had the IT department go through all of the computers at the JSC. And about twenty-four of them are listed as replaced. We replaced it about five so far. I have, uh, I contacted Darlene Hale, sent her a couple of different computers that would fit our needs. She told me which one would fit best. And we would be ordering monitors and cables as well, because we found out when those first five computers we hooked up, that the monitors and cables were so ancient that we had to start replacing the monitors as well. So I have, uh, here for nine computers, thirteen monitors and two sets of cables that would, uh, replace all of that.
Okay.
Restate my motion to approve.
I'll second. All those open for discussion? All those in favor say aye or?
Aye. In your voice.
Commissioner Rosinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Kramarosa.
Aye.
Two ayes. Okay.
Okay, moving along, uh, under D, con- consider temporary nur- nursing contract, Mike Callahan.
So we are looking to, um, approach the council about, uh, paying for a temporary nurse. We have been without a nurse since October. This is causing our folks to come in on the weekends, take kids to the emergency room, pay for, um, TB tests outside the building. This is both for, um, the kids and for the, the staff. And at, at that point, you know, it's becoming a hardship to not have a nurse. We worked with the company that, um, services the jail. They did not want to take us on, but they pointed us to another nursing, like a temporary nursing agency who we worked with. And we came up with, uh, we, we would like to start with eight weeks. And I put in, submitted to you what, what the high and low would be for that. And, uh, to be able to renew that every eight weeks as it comes through, depending on whether we hire a full-time nurse or not, as we have a, a job for that.
So do we have it out to bid right now trying to find a nurse? Or are you trying to recreate the position?
We, we have a nurse position.
Okay.
The job description is on the website. I've, I've actually posted it on my, uh, LinkedIn page that we have job openings. What we're trying to do is get a nurse who can come service the building on a temporary basis until we get a full-time nurse again.
Okay.
That is what we're looking to do.
So.
Do you have funding for that or you have to go to council?
We have some funding for that. If it goes beyond maybe eight or sixteen weeks, we might have to approach the council for funding for that. But we do have an account that we could pull that out of in the, in the very short term.
Well, I make a motion to accept your proposal there and, uh, to, to, uh, enter into the short-term contract. And if it gets to the point that you need to go to the council, uh, it would be a delay if we have to come back and do that. So I, I would add that to the motion. That for now, you can afford it. If it gets where you can't, then you're going to go to the council. I trust you because you're a Marine.
I trust you because you're in the air force, sir.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I, I would let, uh, the commission know that I reviewed the contract provided to me by RNS Resource and it meets my approval.
Thank you. Um, all right, any further discussion? No? All right, all those in favor? Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kramarosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Rosinsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
You have three ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Callahan. All right, very good. Uh, next we have a consider executed attorney certification and finding the facts and conclusions. Uh, Drayton BG, uh, Struzio, uh, Elliott. If they're attending, uh, this comes to us from the playing commissioner. It was passed, uh, playing commission unanimously, if memory serves me correctly.
Yeah, I, I reviewed this and found it to be proper.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion second. Any further discussion? Our hearing none. Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Rosinsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Kramarosa.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you very much. Um, next we have a consider contract engaging in Tigris, um, search. Uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Jones.
Sure. So, uh, you know, our human resource director position must be approved by a bicameral unit of government comprised of both the, uh, commission as well as the entire commission, as well as the entire council at the direction, um, of that bicameral unit. Uh, the coun- uh, council attorney, as well as myself, are authorized to find a, uh, locally based, uh, head hunting and recruitment firm to help us find a permanent human resources director. Uh, Mr. Di Martino and I, uh, were able to make contact and vet, uh, Integritas search. The council approved this in full at their meeting this week. So now we are seeking approval from you. I guess Integritas has actually already started gathering resumes of interested folks. So, uh, as directed by the joint council commission, we are moving as quickly as we can to, to move this process along. So I would seek approval of that contract.
Did we, uh, put out RFQs for this or did we just pick this company? I was wondering.
Sure. So the, uh, the joint council and commission just asked Mr. Di Martino and I to find a company to do this. And that's, that's what we did.
Well, I've asked, what is the process? Did we put out RFQs?
We, we, we did not. We did a search on our own. I mean, Mr. Di Martino was aware of a firm. I was aware of Integritas. We, I don't know if Mr. Di Martino contacted the firm that he was aware of, but we contacted Integritas and they specialize in finding accounting and human resource positions.
Sure. So in our special meeting, uh, the commission and council unanimously approved, um, they, the process to move forward where the two attorneys, council attorney and commission attorney would jointly find a company to engage and bring it to us and recommend. And both attorneys did, did unanimously agree after the unanimous agreement of the commission and council during special meeting. Yes.
Uh, I, I would point out, it's probably worth informing that the commission, uh, attending the council meeting as I do, that, uh, there was robust discussion at the council meeting, uh, for Mr. Di Martino, especially around the notion, uh, of reminding the council that we should not ask the commissioners to, to fund this contract unless we're going to be willing to, as a council, oh, to, to fund the position at the price, uh, that's called for. Because no one will come at the current salary. So I just, I had to report to the co- commission here, if you didn't watch the meeting, uh, that the nature of the discussion is the council is well aware that in funding this contract, they also have a moral obligation to fund a higher level of support for that position. And Mr. Di Martino had publicly said, I believe, something in the order of more like ninety thousand plus. So I just wanted to inform you of that.
Appreciate that, yeah. And it looks like they're going to be taking that up again, uh, and, and they did move, they did move forward from, uh, I, I went back and I watched it, um, the majority of the meeting anyway, that portion. And, uh, they, they, they are going to move forward with the readdressing that. And they, they did, uh, send it to us for, you know, they did their part to approve, uh, their side of it. So we're here tonight to approve ours. Great.
I think it would be, uh, fair, uh, for everyone watching here, uh, the taxpayer who are going to put the bill on this to, uh, just a little bit of history, when our past HR director left, uh, the assistant was moved up to be acting director. No assistant was ever, uh, hired after that. So the acting HR director is doing the job of two people. We did put out, um, uh, bins for that RFQs, whatever they were there. I think we had nine people apply, of which, uh, five were eliminated right off the get-go. The other four, we did discuss. One didn't show up at all. One was really not very qualified. One was pretty well qualified. The only one that really had a master's degree and who was really the most qualified is the current HR, uh, acting director, who like I said, has a, has a, uh, master's degree and has been doing the job of two people. So we want to spend seventeen hundred dollars of taxpayer money to look for somebody else to replace somebody who's been doing an amazing, awesome job of two people. Uh, and then we want to give the new person a whole lot more money. I, I think not only is it unfair to the HR director, I think it's also unfair to the taxpayers that they're going to have to pay for what appears to be some kind of a political, uh, argument here. That, that I don't, I don't understand why we're doing that. We have got, uh, uh, really highly qualified, awesome HR director doing the work of two people. And we want to replace her and, and pay somebody to find somebody new and then pay the new person a whole lot more money. It doesn't make sense. And as a taxpayer, uh, I, I don't, I don't understand it at all. So maybe you can clarify what exactly is going on here.
Sure. So, so I, I'd be happy to, uh, to, to address that, uh, Commissioner Rosinsky. So, um, as far, as far as political, it was a unanimous decision of, of the commission and council at that joint meeting to move forward in this direction to seek and to engage an outside company to find most qualified candidates to have an interview process and select a candidate, um, for HR director. So, um, that, that's comprised of obviously both Democrats and Republicans across, uh, across both the commission and council. And, um, you know, it was a unanimous decision by, by both boards. So, um, but you know, unfortunately, um, you know, we weren't here to be, uh, involved in the executive session that took place. You know, I, I, I would, my, my, my best suggestion would be, you know, spending some more time here on the ground in Indiana and, uh, and getting a better feel for what's actually happening here in the county on a daily basis. Thank you.
May I also?
Yes, please.
Just have a little input on this. Last year, we went through the process and it came to a vote in a public meeting. And that individual was not selected. Um, when you say about we having individuals with master degrees, one of my, um, discussions, two years on the council was that we had three individuals in the same exact position. One had a master's and he's getting paid ten thousand dollars less than the two other individuals. And nothing was, um, rec- you know, nothing was done to rectify that situation. Um, I will also say that while I was on the commission last year, if you remember, Mr. Cunningham made a suggestion and we actually approved it. Seven of us on the council approved them going ahead and getting a temporary person in that office. So the fact that one individual is doing two positions or you have, or you would possibly have three positions in that office and there's only two individuals working there, that is by the choice of the individuals that are there because there's a lot of temporary agencies that we can get help to come in. We're not looking to put it out in, um, the newspaper and try to find a girl Friday here. We, we actually gave permission for them to go to a temporary agency and bring someone in for assistance. Um.
Can, can I comment? This is Monique Thomas and from HR Director.
Yes.
Um, with that temporary position, I did have two actual companies that I, I went to Kelly Service and I did L was staffing. I still don't think that it's fair to the taxpayers to have to pay for another service to provide someone in this office when you have someone in this office who pushed to get my part-time, full-time. That way I can pull someone in this office. So if it was up to me and I was selected as the HR director, I would have to come back and tell that temporary person, hey, we no longer need you. And I don't, I didn't want to have to do that. So that is why I'm where I am right now. So, I mean, as far as like the temporary person coming in here, that is why the temporary person is not here because of that simple reason.
You know, I can tell you, working through college, I worked in temporary agencies and, um, they are just that. They're called temporary agencies because you know that you're contracting because someone's pregnant, they'll be out for a month. So you'll get a four-week, uh, contract or you may get a six-week contract. I mean, that's the beauty of going to a temporary agency because the actual client, um, the company that you're hiring and the people that they're bringing in actually know that they are temporary. Um, I think that's the big difference between going to temporary agencies and perhaps putting a ad in the paper for a girl Friday. And I, I don't really, maybe, um, this is going to show my age because I, I don't know if they use the term girl Friday anymore, but, um, I'm being, people are nodding at me and saying no, but you know, that was, that was my time. no, but you know, that was, that was my time. So again, you know, and there, and there lessens the confusion as to whether the person comes in and thinks that it may have developed into a part-time or full-time job. And doing this with the temporary agency really clarifies to the individual that's coming in that it is a contract for a limited amount of time. And if, if at any point, and again, I mean this with sincerity, if, if you need help, I mean, I'll help out in every way I can to, to contact somebody's, or maybe we can send it back to the attorney and the attorney can help us. But if you feel you need help in there, we, I, I will be the first one to say, I really want to see you get the help that you need and let's try to get you some temporary help in that department. So will we need a motion?
Yes, yes, we will.
So I'd like to make a motion to continue with our, our contract as designated, not only by the commission, but also at a joint meeting with the council.
All right, I will, I will second that. Any further discussion?
Could you say the motion again, sorry?
To continue, a motion to continue to send this?
I think it's just to approve the contract.
Okay, to approve the contract. Commit, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract.
I'm not going.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that then. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of engaging Integris Source and approving this contract here, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Rosinsky.
Nay.
Two ayes, one nay. Motion passes.
Motion carries, thank you. All right, next, we have a consider permission to approach the council for an ambulance and one support vehicle, Director McGuire.
Did you skip letter G?
I think you skipped. I apologize, I did, yes, I'm sorry. Consider task order update for the MS4 permit submittal for Reggie Corthal. Before us here is just extending out our current, our current contract with them expired, actually at midnight, this, last night slash this morning. So this would carry it out through the, through April first. And also has, has an update on here in regards to the permit submittal, to just give a little more authorization for, for that.
Thank you. One of the things that I have found, commissioners, is the incredible amount of MS4 permit information that's lost. Things that were in hard copy that were lost in that flooding process. I'm going to work with IT to hope that some of this is on, on the server somewhere. Also, I've discovered that under the joint permit, all of the information submitted to item was submitted as one entity, the county. So finding Trail Creek, Long Beach and the city of La Porte, separating that information and hopefully it's on the IT thing. So it's going to take a little bit more time than what I thought, but I'm, we're going, we're moving in that direction, okay?
Appreciate your help and your diligence with that, we really do.
Thank you. It's like.
All right, so I. I, is that a motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Rosinsky. Commissioner Rosinsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you, all right. Now Director McGuire, permission to approach the council for one ambulance and one support vehicle.
All right, good morning.
Morning.
I'm asking permission to pursue pricing and approach accounts for the next ambulance is due for replacement. The most recent update that I got on delivery timeframe, if we ordered today or within this month, we're looking at the third quarter of 2025. So we're still not over this hurdle of these long lead times. So still, as I mentioned this before, still doing the best I can with trying to get ahead of this, trying to maintain our fleet the best we can, dealing with these extremely long lead times and build times. So far, we've been pretty successful. We haven't put ourselves in a bad situation where we have a worn and tired ambulance that we can't replace, so we're, we're trying to stay ahead of it. We've actually gotten to the point where I'm asking for one unit instead of two per year. So we're actually reducing the number of units that we need annually. So the ambulance that we are replacing is a 2017, currently a 2017, has ninety-eight thousand miles on it. So in two and a half years, when we actually get that replacement vehicle in, it'll have another thirty-five to forty thousand miles on it, maybe even a little bit more. So in addition to that ambulance, we're also asking, we're also pursuing replacement of a support vehicle. So similar to last year with this, we go through Kelle Chevrolet, who has a state bid. Their bid window is very, very short. I'm hoping to get an order placed in that window. So if we are lucky, we're not sure when that vehicle will be in, it'll just be next year sometime in the 2024, it'd be, it'd be delivered. So that vehicle that we are replacing is a 2012 Tahoe with ninety, currently ninety-three thousand miles on it.
Thank you. And that bid window you mentioned, we spoke about that briefly, the last one, you said was only open for ten hours?
Yeah, yeah, last year's open for ten hours. We were lucky enough to be, you know, get one order in that ten-hour period, which I don't even know how we did it, but we were lucky enough to get that done and get that accomplished. So hopefully, we're just as successful this year.
So I'd like to make a motion to consider purchase, permission to purchase and approach the county council for one ambulance and one support vehicle.
I second the motion.
All right, very good. Motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, please.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Rosinsky.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, and the last item here on our agenda this evening, consider singing sands trail resolution. Mitch.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Michigan City, as you might know, they're currently designing Singing Sands Three. That's a segment of the Marquette Trail. Marquette Trail goes from, when finished, from the state line of Michigan all the way to Illinois. This current segment, which is, goes over Liberty Trail Bridge, which is very close to US twelve, just south of there, over Trail Creek, that segment, they're proposing to run a trail over our bridge. I negotiated with them after I found this out and said, hey, the bridge needs some improvements. So we sat together, we created a intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement. And they agreed to fund the concrete approaches, both sides of the bridge. We estimated the cost to be two hundred and fifty thousand. We'd be only responsible for twenty percent of that cost. And also, they would also cover the inspection, the construction inspection of that as well. But that would take intergovernmental agreement or MOU. I sent that agreement to the attorney. I know it was reviewed, I believe is acceptable to him and yourselves. I know you've seen it too, commissioner, commissioners. So I think this is a great project. It's going to save the county a considerable amount of money. We're getting bridge improvements done at twenty percent of the cost. I also would request that permission to attend the next council meeting, because there is matching funds available. We have to still spend the twenty percent, but we'll be getting all those improvements for, you know, twenty cents on the dollar, essentially.
So I'd like to make a motion for Singing Sands Trail Resolution.
I second the motion, you have a great job, Mitch.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Since this is a resolution, do we, do we need to read the title or?
I think you can. Is this resolution number, it's, it's, I left it unnumbered, I thought it would be numbered.
This should be, we'll, we'll verify that, it should be number four.
Number four, okay. This is resolution number four, approving and authorizing the interlocal cooperation agreement between Michigan City and the Board of Commissioners of La Porte County regarding repairs to the Liberty Trail Bridge, performed in conjunction with phase three of the city's Singing Sands Trail.
All right, very good. All right, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, Mr. Otter, please.
Commissioner Rosinsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
All three.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right, thank you very much. Seeing no further business here, I obtain a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second, thank you. We stand adjourned.